I'd like to call me in order for May twenty first, two thousand twenty five. So.
Put the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Want both to sign it up?
Yep.
Also, rule the agenda.
Would you approve the May twenty first, twenty twenty five agenda?
So did. All in favor? Minutes of the last meeting?
Would you approve the minutes of the May fourteenth meeting?
Sorry, can.
All in favor? Tom Ministeria Weekly Vipers.
Um, I have no update this week other than to say that uh someone turned in a backpack at the rec field. It's got some uh very important things in it. If you lost a backpack at the rec field and you can identify it, give me a call.
That's it?
I've been busy, David.
Oh, oh, thanks. Good. Okay. Thank you. Uh liaison update, Tom.
Okay. APAT, no activity. Warrant Finance Committee, of course, they don't need at this time. Municipal Finance, no issues. We already taken care of moving some money around. I did want to tell you that uh I uh met with Bernard Broder this morning and um he was um following up on the conversations we had about the ambulance and the possibility of a grant and offered his services to work with Wayne and others uh to to try to secure or determine if there are any grant funds that may be available for the ambulance. Um, I think this is something we have the time to do. As I understand, the ambulance, if it gets approved, is not going to be delivered for three years. And so I don't know what payment terms might be in the interim, but if there's an opportunity for the grant uh for a grant to to be received, then um I think there'll be time and given the size of the purchase, certainly worth looking into. So he's looking for an acknowledgement by the board that he be authorized to um simply look into this matter on behalf of the town. He may end up contacting some uh sources that he may find that are available. Um, he may find there are none. Only the one that the chief has already brought to us, but he he volunteered to do that. I think it's a great idea. Um, I think uh just by the number of grants the chief has already brought in, there may be a number of opportunities for additional grants for the town. And uh this may be an opportunity for us to learn about what that might look like. A lot of larger uh towns will have a grant writer. And so not that uh and Bernie's not looking for any compensation for this. It's just something he wants to do to contribute his services. So with your permission, I would get back to him if you agree and tell him to go forward and he would contact the chief and um we'd go from there.
I think it's a great idea. I think you're making foolish not to take this offer. As Jennifer said, towns and so many organizations have a grant writer whose job is to do this and someone who pays experience and background and know-how. I think it's good to have that expertise.
It'd be nice if we could, you know, not just for the fire department, but something like the Lincoln School.
Anything, yeah.
That's 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 something that'd be really, really nice is if we can get something that helps and we want to restore that whole thing. Um, yeah, I'm good with it.
We did talk about the possibility for other areas and we thought that initially we'd focus on the ambulance. Let's sort of clear that issue out one way or the other. And if it then looks like he's perhaps there are other sources or, you know, it could be local, state, federal, foundation money. There's all kinds of different sources out there that are always looking to give money away. So let's see if we can uh do something for the departments as well. Transfer station.
Yes. I think that's a good idea.
Okay, great.
You good with that, Wayne?
Yes, sir.
Awesome. Cool. You all set?
Yes.
Okay.
That's Ed.
Sure. Transfer station, uh nothing?
And thank you, Ber- excuse me. Thank you, Bernie, because I know you're listening.
Definitely.
You should be up here in ten minutes. Yep.
Sorry.
Uh, okay.
Transfer station, nothing really there. Um, they're kicking into their summer mode up there, actually starting Memorial Day weekend. They add Sundays.
Oh.
So that's so not this Sunday, so it's going to be next Sunday. They'll be open on Sundays for noon to four. So that's coming right up. Uh, they've been busy up there. The houses, uh summer houses are being opened up. There's a lot more demo coming in. Uh furniture debris, stuff like that. People are switching stuff around, so. Mary Grant, I have nothing there. Animal Control, we're going to hear from later. Um, I did want to touch briefly on the Lincoln School. Not because Dave mentioned it, but I got a text earlier today from Tracy Levaser from the Historical Society. And, you know, they're they've kind of partnered with us a bit for trying to do something at the school. There's not really a lot going on right now. We've got to start thinking about doing some work down there because I've got one of the windows at my house that I've just got to finish or start and finish, but put it back together that was broken by a branch. And then uh I was contacted by someone else who said there was another broken window down there. I went down this afternoon and just covered that window up. Wasn't so much, it was a broken window, but the paint fell out because the sash itself is so rotted that the glass is li- literally falling out of it. So that's covered up uh right now. Just so rain's not going to get in there. But Tracy did say that there was a uh, there's a, speaking of grants, there's a grant out there for endangered historical places uh through the Maine Preservation Foundation that she was thinking about putting us in for. Uh, I don't know. I did ask her if there was any matching. She actually didn't know the answer to that one. Because I don't want to commit to anything that we have to match right now, so. But that also might be something that Bernie can work with her on.
Yeah, I didn't have a knowing.
No, this is happening. This is happening this morning, so, yeah. Uh, but I told her I was going to bring it up tonight. I could give her a direction, but I think we might be best off just to point Bernie in her direction and let them hash out whatever they can do. Does that sound logical?
Yeah, she could find out upfront.
Yeah.
About mashing points.
Do you want to contact Bernie about that before?
Yeah, I can take care of that.
Before you match him up?
Yeah, yeah.
That's something.
Sure.
He's interested in doing, that would be great.
Yeah, I mean, she's willing to do it on her own, but if we're going to have Bernie do some of this.
Yeah, I just don't know how far his interest goes and
Yeah.
Yeah, in offering his services.
Right, okay.
But, you know, he may, he may.
Yep.
You know, I've often wondered, it's unclear to me what the town's position is on that school. What does it really want to do with it?
Well, it's probably something. It's probably something we need to.
Yeah, at some point we need to figure it out.
Restore it or?
Do we want to restore it? Do we just want to preserve it?
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm not quite sure how important this is to townspeople. And I I think it could be very important.
I think it could be, yeah, I really do.
Start building that ought to be attended to, but
Yeah.
You know, they're.
You remember when the Little Red Schoolhouse got ran into?
Yep.
Kind of a big deal that turned into?
Yep, because of more than fifty percent, no?
Yeah, yeah, but I I think overall the town.
They wanted it.
They didn't want it moved.
No.
They wanted it preserved, you know, they wanted it where it was. Um, I remember that whole
Yeah.
thing.
Yeah.
And uh but I I believe that that the Lincoln School, um, I, some people probably don't even know about it. But I think, yeah, I think I think if it was brought up or something, then we have, you know, we'd end up on the work on. I think people would be behind.
And it's not that big. I mean, it's a small building that for perhaps reasonable money, you could do something that would, you know, restore that and I'm not sure it's ever going to be used, but
No.
Certainly restored and preserved.
And it's in relatively decent shape, except for basic maintenance.
Yeah.
You know, like the window that I boarded up today, the the mullions, the the piece, not the mullions, but the the dividers in the set, in the glass are literally rotting and the glass just said I've had enough.
Yeah.
And uh and one next to it's dropping down, so I put basically a big thing over.
You drive, you drive around all these towns, you're going to like, you know, over towards Middleton and all that area, you see the little schoolhouses all done up.
Yeah.
Where they've done the same exact thing we're talking about and uh, you know, that's that's something really ought to be concentrated.
Be ashamed, ashamed to lose it.
Yeah, we don't want to.
Now, if it was, you know, dilapidated.
Like the one down there Baker Lane was.
Yeah, no roof and it's, yeah. Um, you know, things are bad, yeah, but you know, I I think it's worth saving, so.
Yeah.
Yep, okay. Um, that's all I have.
Okay. Do you have?
Um, no updates on the fire department. Um, the Recreation Committee um had to cancel their meeting this past Monday um due to significant members not being making because of the um clinicals and having commitments to that. Um, but their plan is to have their meeting in June and they're going to just talk about summer activities if there is any ideas for those and then also start looking into the soccer season of the fall. And then the Conservation Forest Committee, they are looking into going and putting up their signs um this coming Friday, dependent on weather. The signs that they've purchased um just aiming that this is town property. Um, but that is, again, I think they're looking at Friday now, but it's going to depend on whether it looks out in their next meeting is June twenty. That's it.
Um, I don't have a whole lot. Um, for the school department, tall with us last week. I mentioned that they were going to be looking into a new kindergarten teacher. I reached out to Mr. Ross and he's expecting to be looking for eighty thousand plus or minus on the referendum question. When they get a firm number, he'll know better.
Will there be a public hearing on that when that occurs or? What what opportunity will there be to learn more about it and provide feedback?
So the select board, because it's a referendum, won't be required to have a public hearing at the school. I don't know if they'll do one in addition, but you'll need to have one on the entire ballot.
All right. I mean, they could probably have their own public hearing at the school or they could.
Yeah, but you still have to have one on the question.
So that's that. Um, the Cemetery Committee is meeting this Friday. Planning Board don't have much. Last week they granted a six-month extension to Acton Solar that wants to put in over on Kelly Orchards. And the only other thing I have, and it's not really uh liaison related, was I'm sure the town now is going live with Comcast. So there's a salesman out traveling around knocking on doors. Or you can go online and if you're available for it, sign up online.
And I will just, I'll just add to that because that salesman stopped in here and when I asked him about a couple of areas in town, he indicated that the prices were much different and they were lower if you waited for the salesman to knock on your door. I just want to put that out there.
The prices, if you go through the salesman, the prices will be lower. If you do it online, the prices are still um incredibly.
For how long?
Five years guaranteed.
Wow.
So what does it make a difference if you knock on your door?
I'm just, I I clarified with him and and he said that.
How does that help the people?
He absolutely said that if you don't wait for the salesman, because obviously I live in Chapley and they've taken over Chapley as well and I'm interested in seeing if the local ones are.
It doesn't have to make sense.
No, I know that.
I said it.
I just say something.
Well, I said it. I said, how long do I have to wait for somebody to knock on the door? I mean, how do I know when we make this?
Okay, the actual, they don't knock on my door.
I didn't actually know that there was a salesman out in my neighborhood. So yesterday morning, I spent about an hour on the phone with the online guy and signed up and I don't know, four or five o'clock last night, he showed up in the driveway. I don't know how much more.
So you've got to cancel your prescription and ask for a back?
Ain't worth it. That's all I've got.
All you got?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I don't really have a whole lot. I I want to con- I want to contact Amanda about the um parking area up there. I'm going to go up and see the uh guys and make sure that we're not going to have any conflicting sports event when I'm using our parking lot. So I'll be taking care of that this week and uh, well, I'd have nothing. Okay, we're going to move down to Department Head, Community Charity, and Patrol Officer.
So Brandon Me is here with us tonight. Um, I've asked him to come up uh for a couple of different reasons. He's going to give you a recap of his first year here shortly, but I thought that uh we started by congratulating him on completing his certifications. He's a hundred percent certified by the state of Maine. He is completely on board. He's gone above and beyond and has done a fabulous job.
Yeah, what a course, what a course.
He's done a fabulous job and he's up for reappointment tonight as well, but I thought it was important to acknowledge that he completed it. It's been a long year and a lot of work putting into that, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, no, I really enjoyed uh being ACO. I can see why Jim likes to so much. I mean, you never know what the call is going to be for one day to the next and then it'll be dead for a little while and all some crazy calls come through.
And you've got the official ACO vehicle now.
I do now own Jim's vehicle.
Oh, you bought it?
I bought Jim's vehicle up uh.
Mary.
Mary, so.
Thanks.
Yes, now I'm cruising around that thing.
Well, wait a minute, what about that um crate you talked us into it?
Oh, I'm still going back in my new truck. Still going back in my new truck. No, just backup vehicles.
Oh, good way to put him on the spy.
Well, it just came by. I was like, wait a minute.
No, so.
I mean, not that we've bought it yet, but we can talk about that.
Yeah, but no, yeah, I really enjoy it. There's been a lot of uh rewarding things, giving people's dogs back, finding their dogs, um horses, pigs, getting more, so I mean.
What is your strangest call Ben that you can think of?
Well, that dog fell through the ice. That was probably the most scariest one. Just the initial call was not anything of what you, anybody would ever expect. To look around the corner and see two people fall through the ice and the dog way out in the ice, it was uh.
Was that not awesome?
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, thank you for taking care of them. They're friends of mine.
Yeah, that was uh, that was, that was a different one. That was real different, but it made uh, made you open your eyes on. You got to get them out of the water quick, so there's a lot of stuff I needed to get, like rope and stuff, I mean, to help them. They were just stranded out there, I imagine they were. They were, they were so cold and uh, well, we got them all out. The dog was safe. Everybody was good. Everybody made it home, so it was a good experience, but I'd rather avoid it, but it is what it is.
Well, we appreciate it.
Yeah.
You're doing a great job.
Absolutely.
All right, that's it.
Thank you for coming in.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Big Brad. You know.
Okay.
That's I, I know we put a newsletter, but some of these stories might be nice to just kind of throw into the newsletter once in a while about kinds of situations he's not into, you know?
Got it.
This might, Ben, but even just, I was just talking to um some town employees and staff. We do have such incredible staff who are constantly training and bringing certifications. I don't know if everyone watches this, maybe even just like updating like, oh, your town clerk or they finish these certifications with everyone else. I know Greg last week, we recognized, I know a couple of weeks ago, Dave and like all these.
Try to recommend.
His continued training and commitment that staff have to to their work is just incredible. I think maybe recognize them in the town letter when they have these achievements. That'd be nice.
Good.
Yeah. Awesome. Everybody up? Fire Chief, come on up.
Evening, everybody. Uh, just a couple of updates on my end. Uh, you know, I kept talking about it last week, but uh Friday, I think it was, I received notification that we were awarded the fifteen thousand through the EMS grant. Um, so that's uh total is like seventeen thousand this year, so doing, doing pretty good there. I welcome the opportunity to work with uh, to try to find some other opportunities that I do not know.
Well, you did a lot of success with those grants. I mean, so hopefully there are, there are others out there for us to take care of. So what's the fifteen going to be used for?
Uh, the two more of those radios.
You feel one yet?
I already ordered one. I ordered one. While I was sitting in the back room after I got a food.
So this will be three.
This will be three, yeah. Uh, and then um training mannequins, ba- basically real life almost mannequins that uh
Yeah.
They'd be torso up, but you'd be able to CPR, airway, breeze, it gives heart rates, gut pulse, does all kinds of stuff, so. Working on final prices and details there, but uh trying to stay in line with uh the county is purchasing same similar um mannequins for the new training centers. They're onboard with this company. Get some real good prices going, so.
How much does that cost, a mannequin like that?
Uh, well, original prices I got were just about fifteen thousand and I've shrunk it down to about eight right now. Are you having a finer numbers?
Chief Dave.
Yeah, yeah.
What'd you say?
Chief Dave.
So that's good stuff there. Uh, continue to try to apply for an eight, and which brings me to my next point. The feds just released the Safer Grant, basically helping you fund new positions or encry your department. So with that, uh Chief Smith and I are going to work on, with the board's approval, applying for this grant. Due by the September, July, July third. I forgot. It's on my desk. But that is full funding for three years. After the three years, the town's good to fund it for fire people, if we're awarded the funds.
So how many, you said so to grow, I mean, how many?
So my plan, like we've talked about many times, is to get to eight full timers. So my goal is four positions on that grant. Fully funded salaries and benefits package they fund for three years and.
The funding of salaries and what?
The benefits to go with with said position, so.
And this is FIBR?
Yep, it's FIBR.
What's the annual uh, um, I guess, grant amount that you would be awarded for those three positions?
We would have to calculate what we uh think it would be.
Approximately.
Awesome. You guys submit the number.
Yeah, yeah, the number, yeah, there's no restriction on the number. Obviously, everybody in the country can put in for this.
So you're going to, you're going to, you're going to figure the three is what that's going to cost?
Yes.
Um, I mean, it sounds great and all that. I just got one, so we 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 kind of keep getting caught in these little traps. And I'll say this is a trap.
Yeah.
Uh, but when we went to the deputy, we got a thing, it cost us nothing for a while, then when the grant stopped, boom, we.
Yeah, that is exactly what it is. When the grant stops after thirty-six months.
So and uh, I think we did something else like that, but at the end of the day, I think the only thing I would like to see before we commit to something like this is a forecast of what it's going to be the impact on your budget in the next, say, after the three years, say for like eight years of, you know, because you were, we're talking percentage, three percent increases, benefits. And because we don't want to give, because you know what, you know, we don't want to get this started, get four more people on, then turn fire. We're not going to do that.
Yeah, yeah, totally.
That ain't happening.
Correct.
You know, because they're there.
It sounds like it's required. Did you keep them on?
You know, no, so it's either you keep them on or the right funds are gone, so you can't fund it anymore, so they'll get, they would get fired.
But there was no commitment for us to continue them at the, after the end of the grant?
No.
When, when there was no commitment?
Correct, there is no commitment.
All right.
So.
Obviously, other than, you know, jumping people's lives up and whatever, but yeah, later on, but yes.
Because this is kind of a big deal down the road.
Yeah.
And I'm all for, you know, eventually getting to that eight. It's whether or not we want to go full up eight. When that grant happens, then you get hit in three years or fourth year.
Four, yeah, so if you just the fourth additional, not eight total, we already have four full timers, so with the four additional.
Four more.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I'm talking about, the four more. So um, that would be my only concern is we we want to know what kind of an impact that would be on the
Yeah.
fourth year because you're only getting funded for three.
Yeah, if awarded, yeah.
What what um, what implications does this have for the per diems? Are you going to keep all per diems on until?
My long-term goal, like we've picked up late in something for, is that yes, get to two, get to eight full timers total. That's two on per day and then a third as the per diem. I can tell you, I'd be straight up right now, we're struggling with the per diems right now. Everybody's hired, everybody's working everywhere, so I'm doing the best we can. It's working, but uh there is a shortage.
No, I I think it's a great idea. I just, we want to make sure that after the three years, it it's not this shock at all.
Yeah, totally. I agree, yeah.
Let's look at the, I'm sorry, let's, let's, uh, it's not just the cost of the four, but what other offsets there'll be in your budget if you go for full time? I would imagine there'll be some reductions elsewhere in your budget.
Well, currently.
Per diems?
Yeah, so so right now, the per diems in our full-time staff, because we don't have longevity pay established, it, they all get paid the same depending on qualifications, so. That's like right now, if we chose to hire a fifth full-timer, the salary is there, the benefits package is not, because that money is already allocated to pay a per diem.
Per diem.
Yep.
Ah, so so it would just be benefits costs for those additional four?
Correct. Uh, currently, how we, how we pay our employees, yes, correct.
Okay.
My question is, you said that your goal is eventually to get to eight. Does it, have you considered doing maybe one or two extra positions instead of the full full and so that way?
Yeah, we can do it.
Whether it's gradual and just looking steps to get it, years beyond that grant, then get into that eight.
Yeah, a hundred percent. We can do whatever number. I just, I just, I choose four to get us to where we are, where I think we should be and then. But we can do, we could apply for one, we could apply for two, we could apply for ten if we justified it.
If you, if you apply.
There's no number on the cap.
If you apply for the four and, you know, we all discuss it and we came up with the idea that two is probably best or three is best, can you go backwards?
Uh, I would have to do a little more research into that, right? I don't have any.
Well, I mean, at the end of the day, if he comes to us next week, right? Next week, it's on holiday, right?
No.
Um, and we know that the cost isn't going to be, you know, astronomically high because if you're offset because of your per diems, your benefits package, you're talking one twenty, thirty thousand dollars. Is that roughly?
Not self-insurance.
What?
Not if the self-insurance as well. Are you talking, are you going to?
Yeah, yeah, full benefits.
Full benefits, yeah.
Okay, that's, yeah, roughly so.
I have no idea what that number is.
It'd be, it'd be easy enough to figure out if you figure out your benefits package, so, I mean, uh, we just get to give us the numbers, so we'll see what.
Yeah, we got a couple of months to work for that, so I can, I can put some numbers together and come back for sure. Before we apply any, uh, fill out any. Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wayne, just a quick question.
Yes.
Is this a program where they uh offer these grants? Uh, is it just a one-time thing or are they doing it annually?
It has been annually, but as we know, the president tried to shut some of this stuff down, but now it's coming back, so it's, it's been annually. It's been annually.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hold on, hold on. Uh, well, Amy, world commissioner, uh, yesterday and today, um, Carol material is down at County Room. It's all grinded up and everything, so. You finished this afternoon. Next Wednesday, we have scheduled a whole gravel down there in the swamp, down there in the bottom. And uh, so next Wednesday, we're going to do that. They're going to fry and grade Wednesday afternoon and I'm not going to say they're going to pave. We're going to work around the weather, but hopefully going to get the base down by the end of next week, hopefully, so. And then um, we'll just play the service around the weather and the weather's really not helping them right now, but.
Keeping the dust down.
Yeah, pretty much. And then uh, but that was it for right now, so that's, that's done. Um, I did get pushed back a week because they were paving Fox's Bridge and they don't want trucks trying to get past the recliner and everything, so we got pushed back, which is fine. Today, we went and cleaned all the bridges off along the Canal Road, the Hopper Road, and we went up to the Volts Lake Dam and shoveled all sand out of the godrails and everything. Uh, my tree guy's been working on Mason Road, Goose Pond Road. They got to come back and go down Mason Road next week and then uh we're just going to, I have a couple of scope of works I'm going to bring to you guys next week, something we got to finish up, so. I'll probably three or four of them next week and have you guys approve them and we're just going to keep moving on and doing stuff, so.
Any coal patching in the future?
Uh, yeah, probably. Well, not probably, well, we get a minute, but uh.
There's a hole on uh Godwin Road.
Okay.
About half three courses mile down.
I have some down in the shit.
Right in the center of the road.
Okay, all right, good. Yeah, we got some down there. We can take care of it, but uh, besides that, that's what's going on right now, so.
Yep.
Is Peck Road a hundred percent done?
No, no, yeah, they, that's scheduled around. Yeah, that that's going to get done before the end of the year.
So we're watching that closely?
Yeah, we're not doing anything till, we're not, nothing else is getting done till.
Because those funds are going to run out.
Yeah, right. I can hammer it in to.
Okay, so make sure we're following that because that's our, our first one.
No, it's going to get done.
Yeah, I mean, they're right there. They drove, they went right by it, baby.
Yeah, I was hoping they were going to do, I was trying to open, they were going to do it Monday. They got shut down Monday because of the rain, but it rained enough that it was too bad, but he promised me it'd be done, so I have all faith in him and we'll get it done, so.
Okay, thank you, David. Um, uh.
Yep.
Speaking of bridges, I don't know if anybody's been down Milton Mills Road, but a couple of weeks ago, we went that way and Milton patched the holes. So, very hard to resign.
I I've over that bridge the other day.
I haven't seen that yet, so we got a, we got a response from that. I haven't shared it with the full board yet, but the state of New Hampshire replied, sent me an email and said, you know, we were, we're in receipt of the attached letter you sent. You should be advised that state of New Hampshire does not own that bridge. Um, the state of Maine and the town of Milton own it. And that we need to address our concerns with the town of Milton and not the state of New Hampshire. So they redirected us, but they're having to take a look at it.
Three days later, we drove over it and the holes were patched.
They had some patched a little bit.
Well, I, I tell you what, they paved that road and they were driving over that bridge with the big trucks that were posted. And you could tell on a dick if you see all the hot dog, they're only come out. I I went drive my dump truck over that bridge, run away. Now shut that thing down. Now shut that thing down. Um, okay.
Speaking of roads.
Yeah, I know, there's anything about.
Speaking of roads, it was that uh citizen that had written about uh Milton Mills Road.
And I replied.
Yeah, I saw you did, thank you.
Yep.
Uh but I wonder if we shouldn't refer that matter to the state, or have we already?
Um we haven't, after speaking with David.
It has to do with safety around.
We had at one point, we had contacted, we had sent a letter, I believe, to uh Scarborough a year or two ago, when there were the issue with the this uh school getting in.
Yeah.
And they were widening up the bridge and all that, and they just did, didn't do nothing, so.
So we've already been in touch with them about it.
Well, I think we, he's right, I think we sent a letter, yes, but when I, when that email came in, the instruction was to just have her contact them directly, right?
No, and and that's fine, but it sounded like a a reasonable issue to uh to try to get addressed, it's beyond us.
Yeah, I mean, the uh, I think the superintendent could might could, you know, have, might have a little more poll as well.
That's a great point.
And he was CC'd in that email as well.
Okay.
So maybe he had concerns.
I think it, I mean, I'm I'm just thinking of people who don't always take action, if they have multiple sources, the select board, the superintendent of resident, if they get multiple things, it might be more like, okay, if we don't do something, this might become an issue. So I mean, I I don't see anything wrong with sending some other communication.
Oh, no, no, it's a good idea.
Doing in addition to that town person and the superintendent maybe.
Yeah, I just, I I I don't think we go, obviously, we can't go any further than that anyways, I mean, our job is to put the news forward to the state, say da 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 da, I think you're right, school, they got more of a issue than we do.
Like that.
They should be, really, you know, that's what I would do.
If 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 they claim a safety issue, that may get people's more attention than that.
I can reach out to Superintendent Ross tomorrow and.
See, never used to be a safety issue, before COVID, people took buses to the school.
I know.
Yeah. Go by there at two o'clock in the afternoon.
I'm not lying, I'm not lying.
There was never cars there before that.
Is that right?
Never saw cars before that.
A lot of, a lot of parents start pulling their kids.
You know, they come in from both directions.
Yeah, they just haven't gone back, it's timing convenience.
But uh, yeah, I saw that posted, so. Milton Mills Road, Fox's Ridge Road, it's not on our act and issues.
There must be some division at the state that deals with safety issues on the roads.
Yeah.
Who is that?
Oh, uh.
Gentleman that we spoke to, the uh Mavardan Affairs on one oh nine, he was the safety division, yeah.
I just wonder if there, if that isn't another way to kinda push this.
Yeah, we can certainly give her, give the residents some guidance, I mean, I just.
Yeah, oh, okay. I I know, I know we can't do anything about it, but.
I I didn't wanna get.
Residents should care about that, I'm sure.
I didn't, I didn't wanna get the act and select board involved in something, we have no say over.
Yeah, yep.
Well, I don't think it's us having say, I think it's just saying that we recognize it's a problem as a select board, we we know we don't do anything, but our hope is that the state.
We could send them a letter and stuff, that's all we could do.
But that's what I mean, having a letter though, with in addition to other people.
I'm just trying to stir the party.
Well, yeah.
That's all, on behalf of an issue that I think a lot of parents probably care about.
Sure.
They're the ones stuck in the lines and, you know, people driving by with cars on both sides of the road.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, honestly, at the end of the day, you you take the issue down there with with the uh lack of room getting through, which is a safety, it's a safety problem. I don't go that way, cuz I don't want, that's a way stupid, and uh, you know, but you know, like, you got the bridge there. Okay, we got a bridge at the other end of the road that they haven't touched, uh so whether or not that, that.
I don't know, I just, you know.
You can set, wanna set up another letter?
Whatever you'd like me to do.
I personally would like to see us send something.
I I like to send something jointly with the school department.
Yeah, I like that, yeah, I think that's a good idea.
So it doesn't look like we just send a letter and wind it every week, cuz we just have one.
Well, it makes sense, but I think many voices may get more attention than.
Yeah, um it's definitely a safety issue down there, so. Now whether or not the uh the state engineer could come up with some sort of solution, send him, send him a complaint, our concerns, and uh.
Photos. Hmm?
Photos.
Oh. I think this roughs my head up. I think he's in spin out there.
It's it's not our issue, I I appreciate that, but it's one.
Tom, just volunteer to go down there and take photos.
Show some pictures in there, show those cars lined up and.
Give him a vest, he goes away traffic by.
You can be the traffic monitor, you can direct cars.
Okay.
Yeah, I think if you send some pictures of a lot of traffic, that might be, that might.
I just have some more of that spaces and, yeah.
Okay, um where are we here?
We're at Old Business.
Old Business.
Fire Department fee.
Okay, yeah, Old Business Fire Department, B schedule.
So uh Wayne and I have been communicating uh since last week when you guys approved the hourly rate for the special events, if you will. Uh we had a conversation with Mark Roy today to um figure out what that sixty dollar per hour rate was with all the taxes included, to make sure that if we're gonna bill it out to special events, that they're paying a hundred percent of the cost, um.
Payroll, payroll taxes.
Yes, yeah, so um we um and I I think the conversation that Wayne and I also had is his recommendation, you know, people that need mass gathering permits or people that have these large events, he's gonna recommend that there always be two people down there, so we're at a hundred and thirty, two dollars an hour is um the minimum rate, no, that's for two.
That's just for the individuals, alright?
Right, but the idea with not um tying a number into a vehicle is that he doesn't want someone to be able to say, I rented that fire truck for eight hours, you can't move it from here. So he's saying, listen, I'm gonna have two people down there, there's a small first aid station down there, maybe he has the utility truck in and out of there when it's available. But he doesn't wanna tie it to a vehicle, so we're not gonna offer that, because if there's a possibility that he needs it elsewhere, they're gonna, you know, they could come back on the town if they.
So there'll be no vehicle charge.
That's right.
That makes, I guess that makes sense.
And even if they drove one down there, it's not costing them anything, you know, it's it's miles down the road, it's not running, so it's safer for the town.
Oh, they need transportation getting there, so they are.
So.
That makes sense.
Did I sum that up pretty well?
Yes.
So we're looking at a hundred and thirty two dollars an hour, that's just the town breaking even, so that would be your minimum charge, and then events, whether it be the Renaissance Fair, the Acton Fair, Iron Tales, whatever you guys decide, um for events, um that would be the flat rate.
Okay.
So we're gonna have a conversation about that.
I guess I have one question, so you so that you recommend, is that is that requirement, so some, could some event come and say we only wanna do one person, or?
The town can all, the town can make the the stance that we only offer for safety in pairs of two.
Okay.
That's.
As soon as it's recommended, so I didn't know.
The town stance is gonna be two people.
Okay.
You know, it's a big ratio for for one person, and you know, it's a safety.
Yeah, so this is um primarily applicable to the fairgrounds?
So th- this is kinda the gray area, you know, we we are working on a mass gathering update to be able to give you guys to hopefully get on the next vote. The mass gathering that we have now doesn't spell out what's required. It's your town, and your permits that you're approving, you have the right to put forth any stipulation on on these events. Um so really, you know, it would be at your discretion, but it would be, yeah, the um fair, I don't know how you would handle the Iron Tales, and they apply for mass gathering, but they're kinda, it's not thousands of people, so I don't know.
No, but I mean, if we're calling a mass gathering, an Iron Tales, three hundred plus, cuz that's his, that's his limit.
Right.
Um if Gray's putting in for a mass gathering, then I think he.
All five, we keep following them the same.
Yeah, I I.
Until we, until we revise the mass gathering ordinance and specify, you know, and steps or whatever.
Yep.
Right now, we have to treat everybody the same, so if you have to come in for a mass gathering, if it's up at Blueberry Hill, I don't know, when it's three hundred people, you need two two dudes and new nets up there, EMTs, right?
Yep.
Now that's the way it has to be until we revise this, I think that we ought to stick to our guns for everybody, same way.
Yeah.
No, I don't know, this this.
I mean, honestly.
The fair and the Renaissance, we, you got thousands of people coming in. Um somebody having an event with with three hundred people, we want them to have a um D C personnel there, I I don't know, that seems excessive to me, I.
I use a wedding because the wedding, we haven't had that.
I'm all about consistency.
But at this point in time though, at this point in time, we're talking about getting a vote, getting something together, put on ballots, it won't be long anyways. I'm just trying to be consistent here.
Right, and 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 David's response, we haven't had a mass gathering for a wedding in years, so that that's, you know, that's not gonna happen.
I thought we had something up.
Well, you have liquor license applications, that's a big difference, but you haven't had a mass gathering for a wedding in years.
I mean.
I mean, can you take Iron Tales, okay, uh I I mean, I think sometimes when he comes into the mass gathering, probably doesn't need to.
He absolutely doesn't, right.
Okay, because he's got revolving people coming out, you know, and we can't really keep track of whatever, but so to require him to have a dual vote, so when he comes in, he better make sure that he needs that barely.
Right.
Because I I honestly, until we change this system, we gotta stick with the system we have.
That's gonna mean that all during Mike Week, the mass gathering that you approve, he's gonna have to have somebody down there, and remember, the mass gathering doesn't say that that you that you, you know, is it up to the town, or is it gonna be up to the the vendor? Because your mass, whether or not they hire the acting fire department to be down there, because.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't made a decision whether or not he's required, we require him or not, I mean, myself, that's something I gotta talk to Wayne about, whether or not you wanna have that responsibility, I think it, I think you're probably doing it too cheap, that the town ought to make a little bit on it, so that it makes it worth our while, because we know if another EMT company came in, they'd be doing it for a lot more money, right?
I've never experienced it, so I.
Well, I don't know, I'm just saying.
They're a for profit organization, so I would assume that's.
Yeah, I mean, I can't, you know, I can't find.
I can't sue, but.
You know, I mean, finding help now, you know, some of fifty bucks an hour is getting hard to find, you know, so especially on overtime, but uh uh we we haven't made that requirement.
What kind of timeline? We're talking about redoing the mass gathering permit.
So we're hoping to have it on the um ballot, July slash August, when we go on all of the other things.
Look, we've been operating this way for years, right? Why why change it if we're gonna come up with a something on the ballot in July?
Well, cuz we need to have an answer to the Renaissance.
Right, we need to be able to tell Renaissance and the Acton Fair and whoever else you guys deem.
So I have no problem with the Renaissance, because, not to pick on that, the sheer number of people that are there, I mean, it seems.
I get it, you're you're probably right, I mean, I I I everything that we've been doing over the years and years and years, I hate devi- we we go, one person is treated different than the other, and then it always comes out and bites us in the tail, like, we did it, and I'm just trying, but you know, you make a good point, I mean, you're talking thousands of people compared to.
Three hundred.
Um so.
The Act of Fair, maybe not thousands of people, but.
It's it's.
I don't know, yeah.
It's not as big as the Renaissance.
No, no, it's not, yeah.
Right.
What's the, what does a fair get for people?
To get in?
No, for quantity, number of people.
Yeah, I mean.
Twenty five hundred?
Oh, easily, yeah, but the difference with the Act of Fair, and Wayne and I had a conversation with some of the members today, is they're going to, I mean, they are required by the state of Maine to have somebody there, so, you know, I mean, so they're gonna have you there regardless, they're required from the Department of Agriculture to have safety on on onsite, the Renaissance Fair is not, you don't have a town ordinance that requires, I mean, you guys are, you know, can require it, but there's not, nobody, as far as we understand, looking down to tell them they have to have them.
What if we look at their, what the state requires, why don't we look at that and see if whether or not we can, you know, cuz some of that stuff might be the same thing. You know, it might cross over.
This is required because it's an agricultural fair.
Yeah.
So, and of course, Renaissance Fair is not not covered by that.
It's not agricultural.
So that that falls, it's hard to understand on the ordinance.
For the Justin.
They got horses for the Justin, that's agricultural.
But it doesn't make it an agricultural event, yeah, yeah.
And I would think.
I just would not try to introduce too much change at this time, until we, if we're gonna have a new ordinance in three or four months, then.
But I think, yeah. Yeah, good. So I think regardless of the ordinance, this cost is gonna be a part of it, I would assume, so the cost won't change if we change the ordinance for at least these types.
The only thing that should change with the ordinance is who's going to be required to have it down at the fair.
And how many, because if you, if you go, like, say, first step up to three hundred people, no EMTs, three hundred to eight hundred, one EMT or two, and then you go up and up and up, um that would determine the cost.
Yeah.
I think we ought to just approve the new rates, to be honest with you, and then undertake an effort to redo that mass gathering permit requirements, and let's deal with that as a separate issue, let's get you your rates, you can get the, the personnel should be getting that, what is it, sixty dollars an hour?
Two weeks, that's what last week is.
Yeah, that's what we talked about last week, let's get that in place, let's postpone the new new uh.
Ordinance?
Ordinance, and uh.
It makes sense.
Sixty, it's at a hundred and thirty dollars.
Yeah, it's cuz of the tax and payroll tax.
Yeah, one thirty two is gonna be our minimum.
Yeah.
Sixty is what they'll actually, wait a minute, I I asked you if the one thirty two, you said, no, that was for two people.
Yes.
Yes, including the payroll.
One twenty plus.
No, it's seven point, no, no.
It's not a hundred percent in payroll tax, is the one thirty two the cost of the two people?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, it's like.
It's essentially eight percent, you're fighting a Medicaid.
It's like sixty, six bucks.
One twenty for two, and then the rest is the taxes that you.
Right, one thirty two covers the taxes for two full.
So so it's like sixty six dollars.
Correct.
Per hour, with sixty going to the employee and six covering place.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Through all the health insurance.
They don't, this is not benefits eligible.
No. No, I don't think, I think. Okay.
It's not benefits eligible.
It's not, that's right.
Right, we gotta make sure of that.
Right.
There's no retirement, no, nothing, it's just.
P T.
No, it's just a.
No benefits, it's a stipend if you will, essentially.
Just taxes and related.
Just, yeah, and it's just social security, maybe unemployment, I don't know.
We gotta take a vote on this?
So, yeah, we're looking to to approve, you know, to approve the hundred and thirty two dollars to be charged to events, um and a minimum two people present.
I make a motion, we approve the hundred and thirty two dollars for the two um EMT officers for events.
Second.
All in favor?
And just to clarify, it could be in advance and EMT doesn't.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Someone gonna notify the uh the uh fair association?
Yes.
Okay.
And then if an ordinance gets changed before then.
We should let them know that's happening.
Yeah, yeah, and they, and we did have a conversation with them, so. They both, alright, um before we go too far, let's leave it at that for the next one.
Renaissance Fair.
Did they contact you?
Yes.
Ever there, school?
Yes, they they expected, it sounded like she wanted me to rent a permit, but I'm like, no, she just needed to reach out to me so I could know that you're doing this, so I can start arranging and planning. And then, so this will all fall into place, they did call me, I think I had talked to them on Monday, um three weekends, ten to eight, uh I don't know, two to ten to six, and two to three thousand people per day.
How many?
Two to three thousand per day. Well, that's what this was still made.
And so you're okay with all that, the fair arrangements and everything?
Yeah.
We were approved this last week, but we just wanted to make sure that you were on board.
Yeah, thank you.
Awesome, thanks Wayne.
Yeah.
Alright, so you have.
This is request.
Do you have in front of you three mass gathering requests for the Renaissance Fair, uh motions and signatures now that you're ready to.
Is this for the three weekends?
Three weekends.
Okay, uh.
Is there a line reaching the Renaissance Fair, did they have to use the back gate?
Yeah, cuz that was the new.
Or is that just implied?
That's, I mean, you guys can make whatever motion you want when you approve these.
Okay, good, uh let me try this, okay, uh make a motion to approve three mass gathering permits uh for three consecutive weekends from uh July nineteenth, July twenty sixth, and August second, um for the Renaissance Fair. Um with the understanding that all three gates, all three gates will be opened and serviced and available in an effort to minimize the foot traffic on the adjacent roads. Anything further on this that I should?
Were you gonna do anything with the park, with the parking on one oh nine, even leave that alone for this year?
I think we're gonna leave it alone.
We're all talking about this year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think that's the motion made.
Do we wanna add anything about the EMTs?
Uh no, we just set the rates and apply a motion, so that they're gonna get those rates.
Okay, so they know they need to.
Uh they will, we'll call them tomorrow.
I'll second your motion.
Okay, well, let's include that, uh we, also with stipulation that they were required two EMTs, are the EMTs or staff?
Say staff.
Versus staff.
They could be a German, right, they could be something else.
Great.
All in favor?
Okay, um.
Who seconded that?
Me, well, they both raised their hands, so.
No, I got it, I guess you seconded it.
Oh, really?
Jen.
What?
Jen. She's not raising her hand, and then I was just, I was just, yeah, Jen. Jen, you, you.
I wonder.
Put it on the knee on face.
Sometimes like your three students.
But it wasn't as good as your Utes.
Utes?
Utes.
That was classic.
I did have to, I went and googled that, I had to watch the clip, I had to go watch the clip.
Oh, that's the best movie.
I've seen the movie, but I just didn't remember.
You gotta watch more with the babies doing it, they got one bell with babies doing it.
Okay, really?
I know, he, the opportunity came, I took it.
Yeah, he, he's a good, yeah, he's fine with it.
Uh, we.
I'm the governor, please.
Yeah, we're all signed up over there. Did I sign all three of those?
I think so, there's no room for me to sign. No extra room.
Yeah, okay, I thought I was assigned too, so. Okay, we good? Liquor license request.
So Atwater Holdings is looking to have a one-day catering event for a wedding at the Everly on this Saturday, May twenty-fourth. Uh, remember, they're all electronic now, so there's nothing to sign, they have paid their fee and provided the liability insurance. Um, so just looking for a motion, and we're gonna approve electronically.
Make a motion to approve, uh, a liquor license to Atwater, Atwater Holdings LLC to be held May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five.
Seconded.
All in favor? Winter contract.
All right, so last week you all took home your winter, uh, contracts, District one and two, they're pretty similar, other than the areas that David talked about last week. As far as District one would do this, District two would do that, looking for any proposed changes before we send it over to legal.
I have some questions, not, I don't know if they're gonna propose changes, um, but just to better my understanding, um, so then.
Looking at one or two?
Uh, I, I guess it doesn't, I'm, I'm looking at North District one, because they're increasing the size of one thing.
Yeah.
Um, and one D, um, in the part where it says prior to the start, each services in the contract shall submit to the select board a list of the equipment to be used. And copies of that, et cetera, uh, my question was, one, since I don't do roads, one is that start, is it specific? And then two, looking at E.
Before you go too far along, what was the same pressure?
Potentially could be, E, you have a similar thing with, uh, license and documents, but you set a set date, not E, um. You have a set date of September first, and so I was wondering if maybe we would just have that be required by September first as well, instead of just leaving it.
The list.
Yeah, the list, I'll hold on, I gotta see where September first it is.
It's in E, it's in, um, personnel.
Yeah, so it says the contract, duh-duh-duh, of insurance, so to me, I feel like it would make sense to just have everything that is required on the same date, September first, and like that. So the insurance, and then this, the, um, list of equipment, but I don't know, you're the one who does this stuff, so I don't know if that would be difficult for a contract.
The, the September first was kinda just a number through and there, so, because I think it's probably have to later than that.
True.
You know, because typically the contracts don't start until October, anyways.
So I guess my thing, my thought processing question is.
Just have them hold for blind.
Have them, whatever date we set, it would make more sense of having someone sign a contract, have multiple dates on their mind, being like, I know everything is due on this date. And if, if we, if September first is too early, then I would recommend we change that date to a date that would be more.
So what do we just do, within thirty days, the contract being signed, or fifteen days for the contract?
That's better, that gives it more, more area, because the problem is too, is say if the contract comes up and it might be negotiated or something like that, you might have to move that date.
So, yeah.
So that, that'd be the better thing to do.
I think that was just, because again, I don't know too much about, oh, here, um, it is under required services, uh, six, near the end, and this, it just says.
What did you want?
Um.
Oh, I got six down.
It says, I, um, duh-duh-duh, was the contract will reimburse the town, it's near the end, and select board determines that such damages could have been reasonably avoided or proven. I don't understand that proven, was that, what does that mean?
I put the word proven in there, because if somebody says, oh, you know, the road commissioner, hey, you hit that, I'm like, I didn't hit that, you know, I mean. And, and it doesn't look like you hit it, you gotta prove, you know, it's gotta be some reasonable thing saying that you did. Because if that's the case, I'm riding around plowing dryways, I'm whacking mailboxes, I'm gonna blame it on Will Langley, you know, and, uh, yeah. So, so it's gotta be some proof that you did, you know, and usually there is, you'll see the wing mark right out there or something like that, so. I just didn't wanna make it, obviously, the contracted responsibility automatically, so we had to have some free area.
So, well, I, okay, I guess for me, it just wouldn't make, be more clear if it said if proven accurate or proven, it just seems kind of.
Blunt.
Not blunt, or confusing, because I was like, what does, I didn't know if it meant something else, so, I don't know, if, if proven valid or proven, I don't know.
And the select board determined that such damage could have been reasonably avoided or.
Reckless, or whatever, something like that, I guess.
All right, I'll work on some.
Yeah, well.
I understand what you're saying.
Word verb is there again.
I, I know, I, I know I'm weird, and I, I just, I know my thought process, and again, I know this is not my expertise, but the language is, um, the other one.
Reasonably proven, it says reasonably avoided or reasonably proven.
Put the word reasonable in there, reasonably.
Um, and then five, six, seven, eight, um, I don't know if I'm not reading, the sources of talent provide four thousand cubic yards of sand, so salt mixture for each year of the agreement. Agreement utilized in both the northern and southern districts, the town will also provide four hundred tons for the northern district and four hundred tons for the southern district. So you're doing four hundred cubit yards, four thousand for the sand and salt for the town, but then we're doing an additional four hundred times for.
Of salt straight salt.
Straight salt.
So would, so the reason that I think we should clarify that it's straight salt, because right now it sounds like you're doing both amounts for the same.
Good, good.
All right, yeah.
That's why we haven't read it yet.
Um, two. And then my last, well, two things I had was, um, in six breach, under, I don't know, maybe we should number the pages.
Yep.
Three, four, um, under breach, it says the contract will admit, will then be required to perform their duties according to the contract within a reasonable time. I don't know if we want to clarify what reasonable time would be, or is it up to the board?
Should say after the.
It says it may vary depending on the nature of breach of the road and road conditions, but it doesn't say how we set that, so that's why I was.
Well, that, that does, you know, depending on the storm, that's kind of a, you know, you, you can't set a time.
Okay, and, and that's why, again, I wasn't sure if that was common or not.
It would be, it would be all determined on, on, on what happened, uh, you know, say, uh, one road forgot to be plowed or intersection, something like that, okay? You know, expect to get your tail over and do it, and if you don't get over and do it, you know, in a reasonable time, meaning before it melts, uh, that would be a reasonable time, so.
Who determines that?
That'd be the road engineer on the select board.
It's also got, on page three, under H, standing insulting will commence at the beginning of the storm, so they're gonna be out there at the beginning anyway.
Well, no, that, so that, I mean, that is for the beginning, this is if there's a breach of contract, this is how much time they have to fix that breach. So those are, because I, I have that question, but they said beginning of the storm is pretty obvious, and the storm is, but this is if they don't do what they agreed to in this contract, and David. Or, or whoever is talking to them and says, hey, you gotta fix this, and it has to be done by this amount of time, or whatever, so that was, I don't know how we. What's, what's, how does we determine, or it is, but if that's common, then I think that's fine, um, and then the other thing that I had was. Was it breach? Oh, um, so you have breach, I don't know, there's a next sentence, so after, it says if identified deficiencies in equipment. So it's talking about how equipment is a form of breach if they don't keep it out. I don't know if that should be its own indent or its own thing within it, because it looks like it's a continuation of breach, but it looks like it's more specific thing. Breach is just a, a broad term of breach.
So you mean like an A or a B?
Yeah, I don't, because it feels like it's a more specific, breach is like, this is what happens, the breach, this is what happens, it's an equip, an equipment breach, or.
And you define it as a breach.
Yeah, so I don't know if that should be, it looks like maybe it was intended to be something that was set, but maybe not. And then the only other thing is just.
Are there any termination provisions?
Yes.
Yeah, there is, um.
Uh, right down there at the bottom of breach.
Damage for breach, and then I think.
No, can either party terminate early without breach?
I didn't read anything about that, I only read them about breaching, if.
I said, does either party have the right to terminate?
So it says the select board may verbally terminate the agreement and shall immediately thereafter provide a written notice, termination of the contractor on A.
Is that due to a breach, or is that?
I don't know, it doesn't, to me, it says that you can just, you can just do that.
I'm sorry, where are you again?
Uh, seven A.
That's a breach for equipment, that's how I read it, it's like, if there's, if they're not willing to fix their equipment, then dislike.
Oh, yeah, because it says the following remedies in addition to other remedies.
Yes, so that's, that's specific to a breach.
So I don't, I don't see anything in here about that, I don't mean to do that.
No, no, I think it's valid.
Finish it, but, um, can either party terminate this agreement?
Well, not ten.
It's a three-year deal?
Yes.
So, right now, neither party has a right to terminate?
If the town, if the, the funding does not get approved, I mean, it does say something about that if.
Yeah, but other than that, there are no other reasons to terminate.
Not, not that I remember reading.
Oh, oh, a breach.
Breaching and funding of town.
You know that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we wanna give them a way out.
I just wanna make sure there isn't any.
And that was the only question that I had.
Those are pretty simple.
I just had one grammar thing.
Huh, where is it?
Uh, second page. F, um, so I comprehensive general liability insurance in the amount of, in amount, not less, so in amount of, not less.
Within the, it can be above, but it can't be less than, sorry for that.
And it says it down in two.
Got it.
But not less than one hundred.
Hey, can we leave something for the lawyers to find?
Who's grammar, they're just going with grammar.
I would, I would.
Their secretary is doing it.
I'd say anything to get rid of the elbow, see, we'll get some, some.
Oh, yeah. Uh, well, did you, uh, you, we gave you the contract to look over, uh, any suggestions?
Uh, only, I know it seemed pretty good, I mean, I didn't, I didn't get that picky with it, but, um.
You didn't pick the elbow?
Oh, no, I didn't, sorry, um, only on the, on the northern one, you, we have the rec field, but the Gulf Hill Pocket drill is not in there.
Okay.
Would you like to have that?
That's, that's, you should count.
That's it.
That's, I'm probably really sorry.
The go.
But that's, we wanna put, make sure that when we put that in there, that, that only would need it, or something like that, so it's not something you're doing all the time.
You have to plow every time, I.
Yeah, but you don't plow dirt.
Oh, no, no, after the fact, after the fact.
It's after the storm or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, that's same thing with rec field too, so we oughta, we oughta, we oughta make that.
Right.
So we don't have to worry about turning it.
And the conclusion on the storm, got it.
So they're not turning it.
And then, um, maybe I missed it, but I didn't see anything in there about pushing the intersections back, I didn't see anything in.
I saw leaning and.
Yeah, that's all I saw.
Something, there's one other thing about, at, at the end of the storm, it says pushing, I don't think it's the intersections.
Everything, well, it's everything anyway, so if we have to add a word in, we're gonna do.
You guys did it.
We'll go check on the wing.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll add that in there.
The only two things I saw, so that's what I'm looking at, so.
We're, we're, we're not gonna do it quite the same as what they do over there.
Okay, that's all.
So.
What about hydrants?
There's nothing about hydrants in here.
No, no, I, I, I think at that point there, uh, road commission, can we take care of those, right?
Yeah, we have the dry hydrants.
Which is the dry?
But, yeah, that's.
We're, we're not responsible with hydrants over in Chapel either, neither Sanford or any other town.
The road commission does the hydrants, right?
Okay, yeah.
I don't know what they do exactly, I don't.
Sanford, they got their own contract, they got a contract just for hydrants, so they're like a zillion.
Well, it'll be taken care of.
But, no, I think it's something good for the road commission to do when he's not plowing.
Okay, yeah.
So, good, like that? Yes, we do, we have dry hydrants, we got the fake one up front here, but that's just for dogs.
So you have the dog pack there?
Dog pack in front, yeah, uh, yeah, okay, where are we now?
At the.
We got contract, new business, uh, so I guess we're, uh, yeah, appointments. Oh, yeah, yeah, we just talked about that.
Who's got the animal control officer?
Who's the animal control officer?
Is I.
I love it, so, yeah, we just talked, and you said, really picked my hand, gave us a clue.
Oh, okay. We did leave.
I told him, I thought.
Okay. So the select member of the municipality of Acton, doing accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as animal control officer, um.
Cool.
That's what I was just looking for.
Can you tell me his name, is that on there?
Uh, unless his name's animal control officer.
Can we write it branded me?
Within the municipality of Acton. Yeah, right, see where it says two?
I do.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, here, just like there was an artist, the same thing.
You can figure it out when it comes over.
Don't write on it, I'll type.
I'm not gonna, um, yes, within, within and for the municipality of Acton, until six thirty twenty-six, given under our hand this twenty-first day of May, two thousand twenty-five. It'll be for Brandon B.
Second.
All in favor? I'm gonna get me one of those animal control shirts.
I know, that's great.
It's something that'll feel longer, I think, a lot of them.
Just be like those cop shows, when they have the cops on the showing these stuff, like, don't mess with me.
We got it.
I think we have a public comment, anybody get any public comment, Joyce, come on up.
Thanks.
You can see your symbol.
Talking about, uh, Bernie, Bernie, I called Bernie, um, doing grants, if you remember, uh, Tom and I, maybe two years ago, had a conversation. With Mr. Steve Wrightout, and I quickly looked through my documents in the USDA. If you're rural and under twenty thousand people, there's money, and, um, so that would be, you know, let, wanna let him know, and if you, if it's okay with you. I'll send him the report that Steve Wrightout had given to me, it had to do with the, um, oh.
Yeah, you get it, yeah?
Yeah.
I, I'd say it's a good idea, sure.
Just mail it to him.
Anything will help, yeah.
Yeah, um, the other thing, um, huh, just curious, is the, uh, Renaissance Fair a corporation? Are they so-and-so, so-and-so doing businesses, Renaissance, Renaissance Fair, or do they, you know, I mean, what do they have to have for insurance of their own, in their own things? You know, what, for them to have coverage, are they required to provide whatever, you know, uh.
So the issue with that is, is, you know, their insurance company is gonna make them do that, that's, that's something out of our hands.
Right.
So, hopefully that they make us, make them do more than what we, we're making them do at this point, you know, we can only make them do some of that.
Right, right, yeah, because I know, um.
Does our mass gathering permit address insurance?
Three hundred thousand, I think, doesn't it?
Yeah, we have copies of the liability insurance.
No, but does it require?
It does require.
Yeah.
Okay, so, and we've seen that we have a tax.
Okay, there you go.
Because, um, a couple of years, quite a few years ago, I chaired the Boston Flower Show, when it was in Boston, the spring, uh, garden show. And we had to, you know, not only did wherever we have, whether it was at Ellen Bank, or, uh, you know, down in Boston. We had, you wanna come in this building, this is what you have to do, and I think you're being generous with that.
Well, the problem is, we don't own the grounds that they're occupied, so we can't dictate that, and of course with the roads and everything else, and we can't really dictate.
What do you mean we're being generous, Joyce?
Uh, you're being generous with a hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Oh, okay, but that's nothing to do with insurance.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Okay, you're onto a different topic.
Uh, yeah, sorry, yeah, uh, yeah, it, it's, I think it's very generous, because seriously, twenty-five years ago, I would have to hire like. Four, and we call them responders, okay, and they would get time and a half on Friday and Saturday, and double time on Sunday. So you figured out, I mean.
It's for the flower show?
Yeah.
It's pretty rowdy over there.
You, you touched my roses, you know?
I can imagine, it's kind of like, you're just throwing it in the river.
You know, it was terrible, but, but, but the other thing I was wondering about, just because I haven't heard about it, is, um. Is there any update on, um, the, what was it called, the command vehicle that Sanford reached out to us about? The command vehicle that Sanford reached out to us about?
So the board is going to have that on an upcoming agenda to make a decision on what's going on in July slash August vote, so you'll see that in an upcoming meeting probably next week.
Okay, okay, I mean, it just, I hope it's not too good to be true when something looks, you know, as it looks like a good deal. Thanks.
We're on it, thank you. Anybody else?
Nope.
Okay, um, do I hear a motion?
I move to adjourn at seven thirteen PM.
Second.
All in favor?